Good morning, welcome to Elgin County Council, this is October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, nine AM. I will call you. For border businesses.
It was all in the minutes of the regular council meeting held on October tenth, twenty twenty three, other minutes, the special council meeting held on October eighteenth, twenty twenty three.
Then we're second, council events, four members, that council show, most second, all in favor? That's here. Remind members of any disclosures of community interest, but generally enter their own. Soon none. Many of the whole.
It was all that due now with the issue for many of the whole.
We're secondary, Deputy Warden Jones. And. All in favor? That's very. Brings us through section six, reports of council, outside boards and staff, six one. Director of Community and Cultural Services, Director of Legal Services, resolution in support of updating municipal freedom of information and protection privacy act.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Warden, and through you to county council, um, this report is submitted on behalf of myself and Dick. Um. Council has been circulated on the attached resolution from the town of Bracebridge regarding the need for the regional government to make amendments to the municipal freedom of information protection of privacy act. Uh, the framework of this act has remained largely unchanged since it was proclaimed in nineteen ninety one. And of course, much has changed in that time. We generally recommend council support this call for change based on the association of municipal managers, clerks and treasurers of Ontario's pending submission to the regional government. And as cited in the discussion and report. Um, I had the opportunity to participate in a task force on behalf of the E M C P O, uh, to recommend revisions to the act, the need to this submission. And which was certainly an alarming experience, uh, in terms of what some of our, I mean, we're probably belonging to right now regarding the number of requests in your major. Fortunately, council did adopt a access to information privacy policy earlier this year, which has continues to position us well in terms of uh, requests that we do receive, but again, we do concur that it is time for the basic framework of the act to be updated. And without any further for your consideration.
Thank you for that report, uh, does anyone have any questions or concerns? Yes, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, sure, not at the turn, I, I suppose for this, then I would share with you, um. I know that in this value, uh, challenges sometimes with the that's there. Some of these law and and I think this time there was a put things back in.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If you can, you're either.
It resolves that county council hereby supports revisions to the municipal freedom of information and protection of privacy act as outlined in September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three report from the director of community and cultural services and director of legal services titled resolution in support of updating the municipal freedom of information and protection of privacy act. And that the warden on behalf of Elgin County Council issue a letter to the Premier of Ontario, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery, Member of Provincial Parliament for Elgin, Middlesex, London, local municipal partners in the county of Elgin and the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. And that the resolution from the town of Bracebridge, time for change municipal freedom of information and protection of privacy act dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty three, be received and filed.
We have a mover, uh, Deputy Warden Jones, do we have a second here? Council minutes. All in favor? That's period, thank you. Moving on with section six two, Director Holmes and Senior Services, Holmes specialized physician agreement, Marotowski, Botox, Daisport. Your channel can be under this last one. Zoom in for spasticity management, overdeveloped Elgin Manor and Terrace Lodge. Good morning, Michelle.
Good mor- morning, Mr. Warden, and uh, through you to members of council, so the report before you is specialized physician agreement and is requirements of fixing long term care act and a terror regulation for provision of specialized medical services for residents of our homes. Uh, this particular agreement is for spasticity management, so we're talking therapy and that details are outlined in the report. Uh, the homes have had two prior agreements with our current provider, Doc Adam Cassam, who's highly recommended by Alkin. Uh, the current agreement ends November second, or starting November ninth, twenty twenty three, and has been highly successful. Um, in conversation with Dr. Cassam, he is both interested and willingness in continuing to provide services to our three homes. Under the advice of our homes medical directors and in consultation with county legal team, um, he successfully negotiated a two year agreement with Dr. Cassam, and that's included in this report. And so the recommendations are before council, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you for that report, Michelle, does anyone have any questions, concerns, yes, council.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, basically, uh, a comment, thank you very much for that report. Uh, I can't let, uh, can't let any discussion of electronic medical records, I thought asking some questions about it, as you know, the electronic medical records are something that all doctors are very much concerned about, and certainly it is the mandate of the Ontario health teams to make sure that electronic medical records are seamless across the transcript of the province. Uh, so I guess my question is kind of do you, uh, you will sit at the table anywhere but the Ontario Health Team for Elgin, and secondly, have they discussed the the fact that the electronic medical records are used best in Ontario?
Thank you for that question, and through you to members of council, yes, I do sit at the Elgin, Ontario Health Team. I have not participated or been made aware of those conversations that are current at a local table. Um, but certainly, uh, conversations with our current medical professionals in our three homes, we are engaging conversations to support, um. Uh, continuity of care, access to records as required, we are also having conversations around Connect and uh, enhancing the security and safety of, uh, of our medical records for our residents.
This, please follow up.
Thank you, follow up, um, so the E M R, the, the, the T of the homes, are they, uh, connected anyway to regular doctors offices or hospitals in the area, because none of the areas that is just a basis, of course, each hospital was a different E M R, and sometimes doctors have different E M Rs, definitely healthy to different E M Rs. So is ours totally separate from all of those?
Good great question, and through you to members of council, so our E M R is, uh, part of our point for the care medical, uh, documentation system, so it's our software agreement that we have, and that's a typical software across launching their homes throughout the sector, uh, so it, we are having conversations for clinical connect, we are also just engaged in a project called project amplify, which is led by Saint Joe's Hamilton. Uh, we've just begun that work, and it does provide us the opportunities through point click care to send such documents securely, such as the E M R, when our residents go to and from uh, to local hospitals, so there's, uh, all of the London and Saint Thomas and other local hospitals, including Tulsa, Berlin, Woodstock as well, that are part of that project that we just, uh, participated, we just launched that in October of this year.
So it's a work of interest, thank you.
That's this.
Counselor Warden.
Yes, thank you, Warden, just have a question, this spasticity matters, but what is it impaled, is there any special obligations needed to do the processes or?
Great question, we do have a policy specific to that, it doesn't, it does involve our physiotherapy team, our registered staff, uh, members of the home as well as the attending physician and then, uh, our specialized physician agreement with Dr. Cassam, so it's an assessment of residents that may benefit from the botox or other medications related to spasticity management. So an assessment would be done by our providers, so, uh, would they benefit because they have contractures or stiffness or tightness? And so that referral then is, uh, or the discussion happens with our local uh, or homes attending physician and referrals then made to Dr. Cassam to do an assessment and conversations happen with the entire care team, including the residents, to then to make a decision whether that's beneficial opportunity to consider for this.
Thank you. Okay, seeing over the question, then agree.
It resolves them the report titled Homes Generalized Physician Agreement, Marotowski, by Botox, Dysport and Zalmin for Spasticity Management, Over your Villa, Elgin Manor and Terrace Lodge, dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty three, from the Director of Homes and Senior Services, be received and filed. And that council approve and authorize execution by specified representatives, the two year agreement from November tenth, twenty twenty three to November ninth, twenty twenty five, with Dr. Adam Cassam for the provision of specialized medical services, spasticity management to Over your Villa, Elgin Manor and Terrace Lodge.
We're secondary, please, also, when you're moving, I think I saw, I think we're getting a second. All in favor? That's curious. Moving on with, uh, Director of Homes and Senior Services, Homes Physiotherapy Services and Extensions.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council, so this report seeks council approval for the extension of agreement for a two year term for physiotherapy services for our three homes with the current provider, Achieva Health. Uh, long term care legislation does require operators to provide onsite therapy services, and that can be provided either through a contracted service provider or homes can have qualified regulated health professionals on their staff. Some of the physiotherapy, uh, services provided are outlined in the report. The three homes currently has a three year agreement with Achieva Health, which ends December thirty first of this year. The agreement provides for an opportunity to extend the contract for an additional two year term, uh, as part of the procurement policy. Um, Elgin County Homes has received higher than satisfactory performance from Achieva Health with positive recent outcomes. As such, we do wish to pursue the extension of contract with Achieva Health for the two year period. The current three year agreement did not provide for an increase in fees during the term of the agreement, so in our discussions with our current provider, they've expressed interest and support in continuing services along with a request for a modest increase to fees in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five to support retention of current providers and to maintain the current level of physiotherapy onsite service, services. Uh, the request for modest increased physiotherapy services can be supported through our Ministry of Long Term Care Programs and Support Services, the P S S envelope, which typically sees a two percent increase annually and the allied health professional funding. And so the recommendations are before council, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for that report, Michelle, does anyone have any questions?
It resolves under report title Homes Physiotherapy Services Extension of the date of October seventeen, twenty twenty three, from the Director of Homes and Senior Services, be received and filed. And that council authorize the increase in physiotherapy service fees for the period of January first, twenty twenty four, to December thirty first, twenty twenty five. And that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign an agreement to extend physiotherapy services for a two year term from January first, twenty twenty four, to December thirty first, twenty twenty five, with Achieva Health.
Move her a second, please. Deputy Warden Jones. Counselor Lavo, okay, thank you. All in favor? Here, thank you. Six four. Director of Homes and Senior Services Pharmacy Services, Elgin County Homes Contract Board. Michelle.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council, so this report provides details on the request proposal for pharmacy services at our three long term care homes and seeks council's approval to award the contract. Uh, you recall on September the twelfth that I did come to council, uh, with a recommendation to extend the current agreement for pharmacy services to January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, and that was approved. That purpose of that was to allow for additional time to support the evaluation process. And, uh, if there was to be a potential transition to occur to support that process as well. The R P was issued in June and closed in July, and six proposals were received. Uh, once those evaluations were completed, a short list of three pharmacies was identified, and they were invited to meet with the evaluation committee to provide a presentation highlighting your services and pharmacy care team. Those presentations occurred on September seventh. And that was followed by reference checks, and the committee met again on October third. The committee is recommending that Advantage Care Pharmacy be selected and awarded contract. Advantage Care Pharmacy was the highest scoring qualified proposal, and thus represented the best complete quality submission. Advantage Care Pharmacy offers a progressive service which offers innovation and technology, uh, guarantees integrated quality improvement activities within each home and process improvements focusing on medication safety. Insufficiencies in catered services, improved job satisfaction and quality of work life for registered staff. The value added services provide a significant opportunity to the homes to support staffing costs resulting from the implementation of the new pharmacy services as well as an increased opportunity for education. The recommendations are before you, and, uh, Mr. Hoopstone and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good, thank you for that report, Michelle, does anyone have any questions? Slight, just one quick one, Michelle, um. There's a value added component that you need to identify, is are the costs for pharmacy services, uh, significantly, or or experiencing?
So the pharmacy, uh, services are, are direct billed to the Ministry of Long Term Care, so they don't come directly to the home. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, very much, I guess. No further question, yours.
It resolves that the contract for pharmacy services at Elgin County Homes be awarded to Advantage Care Pharmacy for a three year term. And that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional two, two year terms for a potential seven year contract in accordance with section seven point six of the procurement policy subject to satisfactory performance and mutual agreement between both parties during the initial three year contract term. And that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the contract.
Do I have a little word, second for that? Counselor hands will move, Counselor Jager will second. All in favor? That's curious, thank you, six five, Director of Financial Services, Treasurer. Request for additional funding, Southwestern Public Health. Morning, Jen.
Morning, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Attached is a letter from the Southwestern Public Health that was recently received, outlining where it's for a increase to their twenty funding. Southwestern Public Health recently learned that while they did submit a budget question, they need for four point five percent base funding increase from the Ministry of Health, they were, uh, only now seeing a one percent increase from the ministry. And as outlined in their budget letter to the county, their responsibility of the unfunded portion is additional increase that falls onto the funding partners of the Southwestern Public Health, should the ministry not support their request. At this time, the help uh, of Southwestern Public Health, we're asking for an additional nine nine thousand six hundred fifty seven dollars to be split over the next three months in order to support their twenty twenty three needs. The county has reviewed the budget of allotment requested, and we do have that additional amount in a budget to support their asks. Uh, so the recommendation that we pursue and accept their requests for these, I have no answer.
Thank you, uh, Jen, uh, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just to comment, of course, the Southwestern Public Health, the other is a rough condition, a floor, which means that if you leave it's not a request, it's kind of like a demand. Uh, I remember looking at the budget in, in the year reports of this year, and then wrote that. Since you were saying was it planned with top of asking forty nine percent, don't want to give a lot of that, so, you know, it's kind of standard, although it is a lot of money. Uh, and my question is, how many courses above the sixty six thousand that we have paid for the extra programs that the public health unit has, or adjust for, is that? And that sixty six thousand has been paid by almost thousands, I guess, that's the question.
Oh, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor for it. Um, it's on our levy, so we are only counting, but, um, all of those news, our news from Southwestern Public Health pay an additional amount, so our share is the sixty six possible.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Counselor, here?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. More of a comment, I mean, it is a kind of odd and or why, that, um, based on your other board that I sit on, other government agencies, and when you make a request to the Treasury Board for an increase of your base and you're denied, then you go back and you adjust your budget because you're denied, you won't get to pass it on to another level of government, so, um, I understand right now who what you things are, it's not up to us to, to deny this, or to request that the budget we adjusted. But I'm wondering at a minimum if, um, council would need to at least send prospones to our input. And bringing up a block, basically, one level of government by denying it, um, is automatically passing it on to, uh, the municipal level and, uh, to our constituents, so I think something is wrong there. And, um, sometimes it can want to see the office.
Yeah, that's interesting, uh, Counselor Jones.
Then I'd agree with, uh, Nancy here, it's just another download. That's what it is, to download, you can't if there's the program required, uh, it's not good, but it's too shallow. I see that animal strategy of clearing out.
Thank you for that, I'm gonna ask a question to all of our representatives of Public Health. And building on work moments, Counselor Jager. Is there an expectation that perhaps the ministry has only got a denied to say a hundred percent? They're lost. Uh, that more potentially go past strategic programming, driven by, is that what the, uh, expectation was for the problem? Yeah, Deputy Warden.
Yeah, it is really, this is mainly stress area program here, now, uh, maybe, uh, the road issue, same problem, I don't know, anybody wants to go out.
Yeah, I can agree with that. So there wasn't any only case under, in, that, uh, public health can look at, uh, having that, this year on that agent for that upset, okay? Uh, the only question I come to have is that I know some of these are pretty personal, and that's not probably happening. Um, seeing the saves that the leadership can make, they have to, but come up with my mind, if I didn't, um, I'm asking for the municipal issue, not the, they haven't been cutting back, um, you know. There's never, I don't know, of this, there's little in summer, I don't know. Uh, you know, really, it is here.
Thank you, uh, what resonated in my mind is that, uh, you know, we figure small macro, the problem, the problem. The name represents, and um, probably recognizing that even that, but it's totally from the back, and that's all I'm wondering, maybe that's all we, with that letters, Josh, that is what we face, or, you know, better, see, but, I don't, Deputy Warden, yeah.
And those, uh, my previous journal, more often, uh, we did downsize or shut out. Never, um. Really, I'm not sure if it's possible, maybe, uh, we figure us, uh, forward that people, we worry about, so, but, being said, uh, we didn't know, of course, like, the health is not, that I think this is, or, yeah, well.
That could be absolutely, I've heard that out there, that discussion going on as well. Resources, uh, and, uh, being very, very not special, it's back, we're, we're all, um, when I first heard, looking for a base. They're up there, council, council board, you said that the hundred thousand dollars we have. How do we know what number we have, so if this was your requesting five hundred thousand or billion dollars, I'm just curious how we find that we have a hundred thousand.
We, Mr. Warden, to, and, or, Mr. Warden, I agree, um, we basically, at the time, we've invited, we are, I believe, that we remain responsible to fund the base, that we actually do fund the base. Um, assuming that we make a new class later, there's also some, um, stretching there to one time funding that they put in their budget, and they also pay that, should that not be pay that they own that to change, ask for them, so we do find, um, what we currently have, we live in, as where this in, because of our experience has been, uh, that's not the goal, it is an industry, so, um, for, a lot.
Thank you, and the follow up, um, and if this letter has been drafted, I would notice some wording saying that this is, uh, this request comes through after the budget in line, it's twenty twenty four, essentially if the same thing happens next year, that we send it for adjudication or send it for part of the discussion.
Is that avenue even available? I'm not sure, so.
And if I may, we're, I don't know if it's available, but I know that it's been budgeted, Jennifer, or staff, and it's kind of hard in the last four or five years, making, could be, and, um, if this is already not the better year, I'll say this, it is, but, um, if there are any who would be to say that if you are a thing, we'd like to prevent, to, to be changed, reporters, maybe we do, both, like you said, we do, both, like, there, like, a majority of gifts, budgeting, saying, you know, don't come back, yeah, real, specifics, like, respect for numbers in your own, or I just want it to, to let them know that this is, so, maybe, uh, perhaps he can give it some shares, thank you.
Counselor Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, part of the issue is, uh, probably, that is that the, the budget for the progress doesn't appear until three quarters of the year is, ever pending the letter to the M D P, I think, that's part of the issue. We need to have a, a budget held, and the first of review, I mean, it doesn't make sense if we didn't, uh, break.
Thank you, wow.
Counselor Warden. Well, thank you, Warden, it's the way this process works, you just don't, that's not be a big deal, you can't have all the money, was it, did there any justification for what's the increase did, or they just say we're going to need more money?
You're, through you, Mr. Warden, to council, when they're, the original letter, it is indifferent of what their budget is intending to be. They're then requesting some of that funding from the ministry, and some of the speakers not providing their share of funding. And that's what's on, on the, so that's sort of how the process works throughout the year. Um, again, uh, to a point, we don't hear from the ministry until now, for, so where is, and so, they've already spent some of that money, so you're looking to a one month, so, continue their year. Um, that's the process at this point, I do know that, um, I have run tallies and, uh, treasurers of the, of the, um, they are experiencing the same thing. Uh, so might be, why would we are sending a letter, and we can, uh, some support from those, and probably, that, that's only from more input from them.
Thank you. I think that's a very good idea, collaboration. Anyone else? Jennifer, have you been, bracing?
It's not all my, through, Mr. Warden.
Oh, thanks, sorry, I was asking, so we can do.
It's all, and council approved the request of ninety nine thousand three hundred fifty seven dollars from Southwestern Public Health, as outlined in the report, request for additional funding, Southwestern Public Health, dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty three, from the Director of Financial Services, Treasurer. And that the warden be directed to send a letter to M V Black, that concerns with the current public health funding structure.
And that the Warden be directed to send a letter to M D Black, that concerns the current public health funding structure that requires local governments to cover costs that have been denied by a central government. Rather than the public health committee being required to meet their budget increase. And that a copy of the letter be forwarded to Ontario, the one, um, in Corbin, Colorado.
Well, I moved that, uh, thank you, Counselor, here, uh, second. Counselor, perfect. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Moving on with six six, Director of Financial Services Treasurer and Director of Legal Services, correspondents follow, items to the. Please, Jen.
Please, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Um, this referred to the rights of causes, fall, actually, have a resolution, uh, that staff here, to provide a follow up of property buying things in rural town practices. That will end up being, uh, in twenty twenty three, with our correspondents receiving on our homework. And so we are, uh, seeing some funds, which how we, in respect to our property owner, inside of town's directional agency. That we have, that current tax assessment, perceived to be a S F N five. When the money is clean, a portion of the fund is to be directed to school board, finding opportunities to government in a structured manner. During its twenty twenty one year under date, the county discovered some knowledge. In the populations from local municipality and other anomalies that related to a population of factors. That ought to have been forward to the county, but remain outstanding. The county treasurer, when we had discussion with our local treasurers, to invest, it would be some of the, I know. The inquiry from which I understand local process would be upon. Uh, the intended interpretation of the most along. Two thousand one, and came to new regulation to ensure consistent compliance and to track economy. There are questions of road related to interpretation of the calculations. The county was able to rely on information received from the ministry of finance to correct their new guidance. The process of identifying, they don't have the dollars, and then reconcile populations typically, and now have active, on behalf of all firms. Revenue is recognized when the amount of collectible was confirmed due and owing by both firms. And we were able to compete and we to come and confirm processes, we're different from the chief fiscal leader. The issues identified during our initial review have been successfully reconciled and funded to escape from the various allegations. Were directly related to these issues. And that to four hundred and two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which were on this of interest. And were included in the twenty twenty two year and financial statement presented at the law, given the, um, account. At that time, council had several options regarding setting aside of a twenty plan to circle sponsor future use. Council agreed that the twenty twenty surplus we set aside into the broker reserve, that would benefit future county contracts. The growth reserve expected to assist the county in successful driving of, uh, the growth. The growth reserve does not have restrictions placed upon it that would serve to penalize its student, or a member of our municipal partners. From decisions that might be made related to its use. In its vehicle correspondence, and kind of, uh, the rest of such restriction. But they were not involved with that funding help. It is not recommended that family costs are considered, and often the policy may be prepared. And may prove to be a most ready for some, for aggressive, that would speed in some, still with rational population, but. Times that we like to seek opportunity to thank the local municipal treasurers and staff for their cooperation and professional giving those process. To resolve the issues, who's done. Their ongoing open communication, sharing of information, larger change, sure that post eyes are recognized, and that we are, is greatly appreciated. Staff report that the ones who move operations that are not annually complete, and with the title of, uh, of. The private municipal grounds. Name, that everyone will find, so, I felt they're not considering, it's no restriction on individuals. And it from our stand, you're right, looking at municipal, and followed it to this issue. But not conditional that the report we seem to follow, no, no.
Thank you, Sergeant, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, uh, I guess, on the start, it's kind of. Let me, you comment, so, thank you, first of all, the veteran, and, um, the municipal, that, uh, sometimes I think it's literally, everybody want the R and, of the operation, what happens there? Um, town of Elmer listened, uh, looking to blame any, yeah, any blame, they're not, I think, just kind of that. But I think we were looking at, uh, at, at taxation fairness in terms of their taxation, uh. Funds to, to the county, um. The, the town did, has looked at this over a couple of councils, or it gets started in the summer of two thousand and twenty two, when. When, uh, the town asked for, uh, information on this situation, uh. Yeah, through the, being with information, I was given that interviews, but, you know, and he used to buy the county to, we know, we should, and you that. And, and I certainly don't, well, it's being, being the death lie in terms of this information, we don't. I don't know what happens to death, like, uh. So, there, there are a couple of items with, with the report that, uh, kind of, uh, sort of objective, first of all. Uh, this situation is called a, an anomaly, uh. And I see the word anomaly is mentioned five times in every part. Um, yeah, I don't think it's an anomaly, I mean. An anomaly is if you wake up one morning and see two suns in the sky, that's an anomaly. Or, uh, you know, if, if I. If I owe my bank mortgage and I, uh, miscalculate the amounts and the bank accepts that. Miscalculation over a number of years, and they suddenly come back and say, oh, you. You should have paid this amount, the bank doesn't call it an anomaly. It calls it a mistake, and, you know, I think we should call it spade to spade, what happened here, it was a mistake, I said, we're not. Not here to blame anyone, but it was a mistake, uh, secondly, um. And maybe this has been done, I don't know, um. And, and, uh, don't know very much about the concept of tax write offs, but certainly, uh, for the town of Elmer, it was, uh. An issue with, with taxation funds that were. Not correct, collected properly, or returned, anything dealing with that, it would be reported in the budget as a tax write off, so I'm wondering why. This situation was not reported as a, as a tax write off, maybe it was, I don't know, but I would certainly. Like to see that, thank you very much for the report.
You, Mr. Warden, to, that's for good. Um, given the fact that the, there was no initial revenue put onto the books, this was something that was found. At the side of that, so, once we agreed on. The amount owing, then we recognized the revenue that was due, so that's why there's no. Technically, or right on. We didn't put it all on, we didn't take it all off. Either way, it's written in. Revenue, it's a revenue recognition, um. Probably within the C I T A handbook, so.
Go on, okay. Any other questions?
It resolves that the report titled Correspondence Follow Up, dated October seventeen, twenty twenty three, from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer and the Director of Legal Services, we received and filed.
Do we have a second, please? Deputy Warden, go. Counselor, it's. All in favor? That's carried. Moving on to section seven, Council Port of Funds Items for Exceration. Seven one one, we have correspondents for the Executive Director, Curator, Saint Thomas, Elgin Public Arts Center, request for additional funding, say, I want to speak with this. Yes, uh, please, Counselor, here.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, um, so, to me, no, I, uh, pointed to the board of the arts, so, um, I have been in communication with, uh, the executive director. And so my recommendation is that this, uh, request be forwarded to the budget meeting. And that, um, correspondence also be sent to the art center to request, um, additional details. To draw on the background, really, that's. And, um. As far as the, the list of details I have suggested, uh, you know, I can share that with, um, the report. To, uh, to the specifics, and that he would be useful to the budget meeting, and happy to, yes.
Well, thank you for that, I think that would be, uh, helpful, uh, it is a. Just significant ask, uh, in one respect, I go to the same looking, if there's a justification behind it, it makes you sure, thanks, so, yeah, I would welcome. Personally, the opportunity to, uh. Have some advice. Say, anyone else have any questions? Concerns?
It resolves that the request for additional funding from the Saint Thomas Elgin Public Art Center be forwarded to the Elgin County Budget Committee. For consideration as part of the twenty twenty four budget deliberations. And that correspondence be sent. To the Saint Thomas Elgin Public Art Center, requesting additional details to support the funding request.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that, that Counselor, you're here, will move, all. Uh, excuse me, Counselor Sloan, second, all in favor? That is carried. Brings us down to. Section eight, other business under these statements, or in brief by members. Notice of motion? There's a urgency.
Doc, please. Thank you, Warden, uh, I just did an update yesterday from our, um, recruiter, regarding the state of recruitment, uh, I'd be delighted to brief council, we're closed, but. We would require something to be added to the agenda, but was not, uh, identified, uh, because we had not received the information, so wait last night. So, uh, in council's direction, we have to add that to the agenda for close.
So I have to make that motion, thank you. Second, your dad, okay, I'll keep it here. All in favor of the addition? Okay, let's move in, voting item serves a, like, list here, I'll be moving, and you want to, great, great, we'll be in, well.
It resolves that we do now receive into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters of the municipal act, section two thirty nine two. Close meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, October tenth, twenty twenty three, and October eighteen, twenty twenty three. Close meeting item number two, boundary adjustment matter, section two thirty nine two H. Close meeting item number three, human resources update, section two thirty nine two B. Close meeting item number four, labor relations, section two thirty nine two D and K. Close meeting item number five, health recruitment partnership, recruitment, section two thirty nine two B. And close meeting item number six, C A O recruitment update, section two thirty nine two B.
Well, we'll, and second, uh. Uh, okay, then, Counselor, you're here, second, all in favor? Okay. It's carried, thank you.
We realize.
Okay, welcome back. Motion to write in the board?
It's all, that we do now write some report.
Over to Secretary. Deputy Warden Jones and, uh, Counselor Winder, all in favor? That's carried. Vote me number one.
It was all for the closed session minutes of the regular meeting of council held on October tenth, twenty twenty three, and the closed session minutes of the special meeting of council held on October eighteen, twenty twenty three, the adopted.
Over to Secretary. Counselor Sloan and Counselor Kirk, go second, all in favor? Vote me number two.
It resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Legal Services be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed.
Move by Counselor Winder. Seconded by Deputy Warden Jones, all in favor? That's carried, closed meeting item number three.
It resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Human Resources be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed.
Over to Secretary. Uh, gee, Chris. Uh, Counselor Latham. All in favor? The motion. Still carried. Close item. Number four.
It resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Human Resources be received for information, and that staff proceed as directed.
Over to Secretary. Counselor Winder, and seconded by Counselor here, all in favor? That's carried. Vote me, item number five.
It was all that the confidential report from the Chief Administrative Officer, per the U C, per the motion.
Vote exactly. Counselor, okay, and Counselor Sloan, second. All in favor? That's carried, and closed meeting item number six.
It resolved that the Chief Administrative Officer proceed as directed.
Vote for Secretary, please, Counselor Winder will move, and Counselor Hills will second, all in favor? That's carried. Section one, motion to adopt recommendations, sir, available?
It was all that do now adopt recommendations of the pain with the whole.
Okay, Counselor, uh, beautiful, yeah, Deputy Warden Jones. And Counselor Sloan, second, all in favor? That's carried. Confirmation by law.
We had a first, second, and third read of bylaw number twenty three dash forty one, being a bylaw to confirm receipt of the municipal council, the appropriation of the county belonging, that, you know, totally twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, meaning.
Vote for Secretary, please. Counselor Sloan. Counselor Latham, will second, all in favor? That's carried, praise to the chairman, both.
It is all that we do now adjourn at ten fifty two A M, to meet again on November fourteenth, twenty twenty three, at nine o'clock A M.
Counselor Winder will move, and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much for joining us this morning, and have a great day. We are here.